Seven, so I'd like to call the March 22nd, 2022 Planning Board Meeting to Order. Please, Tina, could you call the roll?
Kevin Donovan?
Here.
Bob Doherty?
Here.
Dave Edmonds?
Here.
Jim Callahan?
Here.
Mike Ventreska?
Yeah.
Carolyn Turner?
Here.
Chair Claudia Bulgan?
Here. Before the meeting begins, I would ask that you please silence your cell phones and note this meeting is being recorded. All right, first on the agenda, public hearing continued, roadway improvement plan Zero Village Street.
Yes, Madam Chairman, and members of the board and the audience, hearing on this one lot subdivision started in January was continued several times to this meeting in order for the applicant to respond to a number of comments and issues that were raised by various city departments. At the last meeting, it was hoped that we would continue the hearing tonight, but since the last meeting, the applicant has significantly revised his filing, revising the plan, providing additional documents in the way of HOA documents and drainage calculations, and revised a couple of other supporting documents. Those new, the new material has been forwarded to the various city departments, but we have not received comments back from all of them, having received the filing only last week. So, the applicant, in fact, in recognition of that, has requested a continuance of the public hearing this evening to the board's next meeting, which is scheduled for April 26th, 2022. The request is in writing, and Attorney Salvati is here to answer any questions you may have.
All right, and before we substantively begin, I'd like to mention that Bob Doherty missed February 22nd meeting, but I understand that he has filed his compliance of the missed hearing certification form. So, so he will be participating tonight. All right, what is the will of the board? Is there any questions, are there any questions for Attorney Salvati? Are there any questions for the Planning Board Director? We have before us a continuance of a public hearing, so I can certainly open the meeting and ask for any participation and then, you know, move forward with any board questions. I see nobody objecting. So, this is a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak on the Zero Village Street roadway improvement plan, please come up and state your name and address for the record, please.
I'd just like to say that tonight our pass, there was being continued. I've never been to one of those.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, the public hearing is open, and at this point, what is the will of the board?
Make a motion to continue the public hearing to the April 26th, 2022 meeting.
At 7:00 PM?
At 7:00 PM, yeah.
At 7:00 PM, all right, a motion by Bob, second by Jim. Any further discussion?
Yeah, please, excuse me.
Sure, Mike, go ahead.
Just let the, um, the audience know that these plans are now available for the interview?
Yes, yes, they're certainly on file, and we will eventually, if we don't have them already, they will also be posted online. You'll be able to look at all the documents there. The people that are here in the audience actually have a copy of the documents already.
Thank you, thanks.
All right, any further discussion? There has been a motion made and seconded to continue the public hearing to April 26th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. I'd ask for a vote, all in favor, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, seven in favor, none opposed, that matter stands continued.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda, under subdivisions, Robertson Way, expiration of construction completion date. Tina?
Yes, Madam Chairman, and members of the board and the audience, so this is a subdivision that has been around for about 12 years, was substantially complete many years ago. Year and a half, 13 months ago, the board conducted a public hearing, although construction was complete as built, and acceptance plans had yet to be provided, excuse me, as-built plans had yet to be provided to the board. The board solved one issue, you might recall that there was a requirement originally that there'd be a guardrail and a locking gate and fence set up at the end of the cul-de-sac. The board held a public hearing on that and ultimately waived that requirement, which would have paved the way for completion of the as-built, and that was about 13 months ago. We've had a number of continuances, waiting for the developer to, in fact, submit an as-built. He did submit one in January of this year. The engineering department commented on it, those comments were provided to the applicant several weeks later. He vowed that he would submit a revised amended plan to the engineering department for review, and as of today, toward the end of March, that has not been done. There's been no revised as-built submitted to engineering for review, and we've not heard from the developer. So, we sit here now with an expired completion date, and an outstanding obligation for an as-built plan, and certification from the design engineer that construction substantially conforms to the plan.
All right. In terms of the applicant, is there anyone here representing, Mr. Melanson?
Reluctantly, very much so, Bobby, for the applicant. I have spoke several times for him, he did not contact me for this particular meeting. I would guess I would ask for another month, and as, perhaps maybe you could give some kind of drop dead date on this, and I'm not sure what the repercussions would even be to, um, to a non-filing on this, if you could take the bond or ask to take the bond, but I could, I could say here today that we could ask for a continuous to the 24th, and that would be our last request.
All right, thank you very much. Board members. Dave?
How much are we holding in the bond, through the chair?
$25,000.
And that would be used to take care of this stuff that's never been done?
So, if the board decided to revoke the bond, we would then advertise for some, an engineer to complete the as-built plan, and then do whatever work was necessary for he or she to provide the required certification. Whatever those costs would be, would be taken from the bond, and if there was any money left over after those charges were paid, the money would revert, the balance would go back to the developer.
Is that sufficient funds to complete these tasks?
I can't tell you, um, when, when it was originally reduced to 25,000, I think engineering at the time had actually estimated the cost, this is going back several years, but my clear recollection, recollection is that they had estimated that it would cost about $10,000 to complete the plan and the certification. And I had objected at that time to an extension, and was concerned that there might not be enough money left in the bond with inflation. So, the board actually held more than what the engineering department was recommending at that time. I cannot tell you, though, I have not gone back to engineering this week or this month to ask them if they still feel that now 25,000 would be enough money. I think it would be prudent for me to do that, you know, with or without your direction, I can certainly do that with the engineering department.
So, what's the cost of the city itself to manage this whole process? Is it worth it to us to not give them a month in the hope that suddenly we'll get done what we want done? I mean, because it's work, I mean...
Oh, it's a lot of work. It's, um, it's meeting with engineering to come up with the estimates, it's confirming it with you, making sure we have the money, it's writing a letter to the bank to get the bond back, it's doing a bid or some sort of a public announcement that the work is available for people to bid on, so it is a lot of work. You know, the ultimate answer would be to give a 30-day extension, or give no extension, and just say that we're going to put this back on the agenda at your April meeting. That would give me time to double-check the costs with engineering, and it would also give Mr. Melanson time to submit the revised as-built and fix it if anything remains to be fixed, and something that you could then accept at the meeting, at your April meeting.
Is it just a pro forma thing to not give the continuation and just add it on to the next month's agenda? What's the...
Well, I like the idea of not extending it, the fact that it's now expired allows you at any time to move to vote, to revoke the bond. If you give him till March 31st, I don't know that it's necessary that you do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, are you all set?
Yes.
All right, are there any other questions? Oh, Jim?
To extend upon Tina's question, I believe the notes we received today referred to a three-way valve that's missing, and some as-built utility tie-ins, if I recall correctly, and I'll see here in my notes tonight, but I'd like to see what the valuation of that actual piece of equipment is, and the amount of time and effort roadway reconstruction to install it, and that will weigh into whether, uh, we'd want to consider the city taking it on. I saw that Mr. Duran was asked to weigh in on his feelings of it, I don't know that, at this point, it should be a unilateral decision. I think it should come revert back to the planning board, because this was all approved through the board process, and all the departments had their time to review it and approve installations along the way, and so if these components were left out inadvertently, they need to be corrected. But the value, which is being held versus what the cost to repair, I think you'll find it going to be fairly, greatly, uh, partly, unfortunately. So, if we can ask the engineering department particularly about that three-way valve and all.
Certainly.
I appreciate it, thank you, that's it.
All right. Any other board member have discussion? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion. Carolyn?
I'd make a motion to put the matter on to the agenda for the next meeting that is at least 30 days out.
Yes, it'd be April 26th.
All right, and would you like to specify that it is for a hearing on the revocation or potential revocation of the surety bond?
I will.
All right, so that is the, the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dave, any further discussion?
Again, excuse me, again.
Yeah, Mike, go right ahead.
Does that include what Jim had stated as far as asking for more information from the DPW?
I think that, I think that in, in preparation for a hearing on the potential revocation of the surety bond, Tina would take it upon herself to get the relevant information from the city department that Jim requested, as well as the question Dave had as to the inflationary situation on the $10,000 that we had, a figure that is quite elderly at this point. Would that be correct, Tina?
Yes.
All right, so that is the motion, so motion by Carolyn, second by Dave, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I would call for a vote, all in favor, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven in favor, none opposed, this matter stands continued to April 26th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. Thank you, Mark. Next on, next on the agenda, I see Planning Board Director update.
A couple of things to cover this evening, the first is that, you remember, we started a discussion at the last meeting about potential increases in a number of the fees that the board charges for various filings. There was a pretty good discussion about the fee and the approach to dealing with the expiration of construction completion dates and requests for extension due to unfinished work or obligations. At the last meeting, there were a number of various approaches discussed. I chatted with the city solicitor, and in fact, she confirmed what we thought that night, which was that a, sort of a inflating scale of increasing fees from extension to extension would not be appropriate. The fee charged must, in fact, reflect the cost of actually providing the service, if you will, so that was out, but she was very supportive of the idea of a fee, period, and then a requirement that perhaps bond balances be reviewed at, with every request for an extension, and that the board would certainly be within its rights to require that a developer post additional money to make sure, you know, sort of as a condition of retaining the status of an approved subdivision available for construction. That would require, if that were ever needed, that the developer's going to have to go back to the bank and ask for, I don't know, 500, $5,000, whatever it is, it's going to get a little bit harder, a little more difficult for a developer to do, certainly still doable, but it's going to take more steps, and that might be enough of additional incentive, and perhaps with some other additional changes, but that certainly could perhaps help our situation a bit. So, I had hoped to be able to come up with a couple of provisions for the rules and regulations for you to talk about informally tonight, and perhaps schedule a hearing for the next meeting. However, as I got into the rules and regs to try to actually put something together for consideration, I found other things in the sections dealing with plan amendments and completions that also are going to require some correction. So, I got down, and it's a lot more work than I originally had thought it would be, because there is some additional things that are going to have to be addressed. I'll give you what, for instance, on at least one of them, one of the sections that's in the rules and regs talks about amend or failure to complete the plan, and in the same paragraph, it talks about if an applicant wants to seek to amend or modify an approved subdivision plan, or fails to complete the subdivision by the approved completion date, said plan and other required materials shall be submitted to the planning board in compliance with the most recent adopted regulations. The phrase, "failure to complete the subdivision by the completion date," that's a whole different subject than somebody amending an approved plan, so it's going to have to be broken out into a separate paragraph, and there are references in other sections of the rules and regs about bond reductions and surety that are also going to need to be amended. So, long story is, I'm going to need more time than I had since the last meeting to finish. My hope is to be able to provide you before the next meeting, at the end of April, with a draft language that I'll be able to vet with both the engineering department and the city solicitor, so that when you actually see it from me in advance of the April 26th meeting, you'll know that it's been through those reviews as well. So, that's my hope, thank you for the indulgence of time, but I need a little more than I thought I would need.
All right, does anyone have any questions for Tina? Bob?
I do, so Tina, what I'm reading here is that the city solicitor is saying, rather than charging a fee every time somebody asks for an extension, that it would be better that if they come and ask for extension, that we revise the bond?
Well, she's actually, she's okay with the notion of a fee being charged for the request for an extension. What she objected to was the notion that the fee might go from 500 the first time to 750 the second time, to $1,000 on the third request for an extension. The idea of increasing the fee with time was what she objected to, not with the notion of charging, say, a $500 fee every time they request an extension, that she was okay with.
Okay, good.
But to follow up on your question, Bob, the, the idea that the fee itself could somehow be punitive was rejected by the city solicitor, but in terms of a requirement that if the applicant does not finish the subdivision in the original time, then we as a planning board could perhaps take inflation into account, and as a condition of re-upping the developer, hike the bond. So, in essence, it's not the fee that would be going up, but it would be the bond, and that gives the developer perhaps even a bigger incentive to get the subdivision done in the original time. Am I understanding correctly the advice that you received?
That you are.
Because the bond would be harder to get, so, so you raise the bond from 25,000 to 25,500, they'd have to go through more hoops to get that 500, rather than if it was just a fee of 500, they could just write out a check for $500 and...
Well, I, let me just get, get that, I, I think in, in the $500 increment, you know, that may be, you know, a not, not how I'm thinking about it, if we approved a subdivision two years ago, and in two years, inflation has run amok, and the bond is now 50,000, right? That sort of thing might, you know, do that to a couple of developers, and then they might understand two years is two years. That was sort of more how I understood it.
I think mechanically, the way it would work, Bob, is the board would, does have and would have a fee, if you want to ask for an extension, you file the request and you give us a check for $500 as a filing fee, and then we consider whether to grant an extension, and as part of that consideration, we would ask the engineering department to review the bond versus the work that's outstanding at that point, what's the value of the outstanding work and obligations, and then compare that to what we have in the bond. If there's a difference of 500 or a difference of 50,000, we would notify the developer, we'd have a bond from, or a communication from engineering to explain it, and we would say, before you come to the planning board meeting asking for the extension, you need to go to the bank and get the amount of the bond changed to reflect this additional money engineering is recommending. And then they'd have to come to a planning board meeting, they have to go to the bank and do whatever they got to do there to get the up, increase bond, and bring it back to the board and have the discussion about an extension. So, not only would there be additional money they might need to post and put aside and not have access to as a result of that, but it would also be additional work for them and steps to have to go to the bank, and if they had, did that two or three times, maybe the bank would say, hey, you really need to finish this up, you know? I don't know, that's the hope.
So, I could see, depending, if something's two years that, up ahead, whatever it is, then I could see that affecting the bond by, I don't know, thousands, but, so, as it stands right now, there is no fee for filing for an extension?
We are not charging, we are not currently charging a fee.
And, and, and what was in there last time was, was to do that now, from, I'll put something in there, I, I don't know if I saw 500.
It was 500.
It was 500, okay. I, that part of it, because we, in, once somebody's, once it ends, we have people coming before us every three months for a year, you know, four times in a year to come before us, so the amount of the bond may not change much, but if that was going to cost them $2,000 to do that, then that might make them think twice about asking for extension after extension after extension.
Another possibility is that it will make them more realistic about how long they're going to need when they ask for an extension. They may not ask for 60 days if they think they're really going to need 90, and so we may get an answer that is different in the face of that fee than we get today, you know? They may want to come in here and, and give us the most rosy possible answer they can give, which is, I only need two more months, and they might really need three.
And the city solicitor was okay with that?
She was okay with the notion of charging a fee whenever they request an extension, yes.
Excellent, thank you.
Are you good, Bob?
I am good.
So, what that brings up, and, and I think the reason, Tina, that you need more time is, when looking at our rules and regs with just fees in mind, you get to these various sections, and more than fees comes up for you. For example, if we had a subdivision we approved in, say, 2009, and extension after extension has been granted, and here we are, you know, 20, you know, 12 years later with a bond that may or may not reflect the cost of finishing it, if we amended our subdivision rules not only for the fee, but to provide at the extension request time, the board having to reassess the bond, then we would never be in that situation again, which strikes me as a really good idea. So, with respect to your review more comprehensively of how the fees relate to what you see in the subdivision rules, looking at it from that more expansive lens, you know, that's, I think, a really good use of your time, Tina.
Thank you.
All right, Mike?
You, you got me thinking of this, and I, I don't, what if, obviously, what if they said, no, I'm not going to do that, and I, what would be the recourse? That's my first question.
So, if they said, we're not going to give you extra money in the, in the bond, and then I think the board is at a crossroads, it really needs to think about, you've now got a subdivision under construction, we don't have enough funding to pay for the remaining work, I think you have to make a decision whether you wanted to stop the bleeding there, and maybe seize the bond, you might need to put a little bit with it, but get it done, or do you want to let this developer who's already used so many years and hasn't finished to run another two, four, or six, and get further behind the eight ball with costs perhaps increasing? It would be a difficult position.
But it would magnify the situation because of, you know, we're asking for more money, its costs are going up.
It would.
Because of inflation or whatnot. Hold on, my second thought is, and I'm thinking for these subdivisions you mentioned, probably the last 12 years, what happens if, for instance, we change the rules, like sidewalk widths or something like that, and now we're stuck with a subdivision that was designed in the 70s?
Well, that is how the state law works. The subdivision rules and regs that a developer is required to follow are those that were in effect at the time you approved the plan, or the time they actually filed the plan for consideration.
Is there a way to say, that's good until a certain point? I mean, like, some, like, what happens if it's, you know, something very drastic that we, we wanted to change, like the, the right of way in the front of the house, you know, the sidewalk width?
I don't think you could retroactively go back and tell a developer who already had a plan approved that he had to change it. I think you're stuck with what was in effect.
Can I just follow up on that? So, I guess the question is if a developer has a plan, and it has a two-year completion date, and the developer doesn't meet the two years, and the plan approval expires, does that change your answer?
Say it again, Claudia?
A developer comes before us with a plan under the subdivision rules in effect in, say, 2009, and we give a two-year approval, because that is what the developer said he or she wanted, and it comes to be 2011, and the plan, the subdivision is not completed, and the subdivision expires, we for whatever reason do not grant a extension. Then at that point, is the developer now stuck with the 2011 plan, I mean, the 2011 subdivision rules or the 2009 subdivision rules?
So, if the completion date expires and you choose not to extend it?
Or they didn't apply in time and it expires by the operation of the plan.
So, I'd have to think about what the ramifications would be of that. You know, the planning department does a pretty good job, and fortunately, we do check, track them. The board, the department didn't always do that, but in the last five or six years, we've gotten pretty good at making sure we stay out in front of the expirations, but you can't always say that will be true, and there could always be one that slips through the cracks, so your scenario could in fact happen. I guess if you got to the end of two years, a subdivision was under construction, they didn't finish, I think they're always subject to the seizure of the bond, you would hope that the prospect of that would be enough to have them come in and ask you for an extension and explain why they needed more time. I think that's much more likely to happen, but if it didn't, I think then the board would be faced with a notion of taking the bond, it would be two years old, but hopefully inflation would not have outstripped it, there is a contingency that's always built into these of 20 or 25%, so you do have a little bit of cushion in, for your first two years at least.
But if you could think about that?
I will.
Because, because otherwise, what Mike's scenario would be is that you get a plan approved in 2009, and you're, you're, you're locked into the 2009... in 2009, and you're locked into the 2009 rules forever, even if you let your plan expire and then come back and say, oh, mea culpa, give me more time. So, and then you, so I think Jim was next, and then Carolyn.
I think Tina's going to her hands full as she opens up to the planning regs, just finding more and more. But I think you absolutely have to tie into a schedule, and you can put your milestones and the monetary value to those milestone levels, all right, that go directly to the surety bond. The other thing, answer a couple of questions, once a building permit is issued, that's not revocable as long as the continually working, which is separate than the planning board. The planning board is going to give you the planning directive lines that are actively working, that it's not revocable.
On the building permits, that's right.
On the building side. So most of these developments are going to be through the roadway development, and they'll be into the housing component when they go to expiration dates. So they're going to have a few houses develop, most cases, all right, and they're looking to finish up the last couple lots or get the closeout documents to us, all right? So at that part, you know, they're going to be to a different level, where we're going to be less exposure for the city, I guess, is one way of looking at it. I don't know. I just, there's a lot of things you have to weigh in it. I think that the whole process should probably be evaluated. And it probably takes some input in from the developers, what their feel is, but I really strongly feel that the schedule is what's bringing all the heartache to both sides. I don't think they ever intend to meet a two-year deadline, and they also know that it's not going to be held against them, because there's no teeth currently, and that's what we need to make corrections to.
Tina?
Just a reminder that a couple of years ago, we did amend the requirements for definitive plans to require when they do submit a definitive plan for consideration that they provide, that they propose a completion date and provide a timeline for construction. So I think then it's going to be incumbent upon the planning board to have a specific discussion about that with the developer. Are you sure? You've only asked for two years. Are you, you know, we're in September now, are you likely to start work and get this project done in the two-year date? What about the winters when you can't get things done? We can have a robust discussion. The answer probably for many of these is two years is not enough. So let's have a realistic expectation at the beginning of how long they think it will take. Be good to, better for the neighbors, obviously. They'll leave this room with, I think, a better answer or more well-thought-out response to how long it's going to take. Anyway, we do require the timeline, but I get your point about tying that to milestones of construction as well.
Jim, are you good?
Yes, I am.
And I will say, there are certainly subdivisions that did not pull a billing permit within that two years, too.
Two of them came running to mind. I wrote them down.
Couple came run into mind, but, you know, I appreciate the point. Carolyn, you were next.
Sure. Through the chair to Tina. So if a plan is approved, say, in 2009, they anticipated expiration date is 2011. You have a change to Mike's point, a change to the rules or regs in between that time period. The developer is held to the, whatever was in effect in 2009 at the time the plan is approved, correct? So let's say 2011 and six months, or 2012, they seek an extension. At that point, are you saying, in that interim period now, after the expiration date, the original expiration date, there's a change? Are you saying they're not subject to those rules and regs, they're still held to, excuse me, whatever is in effect in 2009?
Yes.
So what if you made any extension contingent upon complying with the new rule and regulation?
Well, it's funny, I wrote that down as something to do a little research on with the city solicitor. Is it possible to also layer on at your election, and this is a little bit dicey, there are certainly times, like what we've experienced in the last two years, has been different. There was a period of time when it was very hard, and maybe it still exists, for them to deal with certain utilities. Sometimes there have been requests or reasons for requests for extension that are totally legitimate, that you wouldn't necessarily want to penalize somebody. But there may be situations where there have been changes to the rules and regs, and you would like to require them to comply. And theoretically, maybe they could. I'd have to research that with the city solicitor to see if that could be another prospect for them to face if they asked for an extension. Just not sure. I'd have to find that out.
All right. All right. Is there anybody on this topic that has any other comments or questions? Seeing none. Tina, I see the next housing choice law topic under Planning Board Director Update.
Yes. So the, I just want to let you know that the mayor and I and the city solicitor attended a city council committee meeting of the whole a couple of weeks ago to fill the council in on the new law, provided them with a copy of the same presentation I provided to you from the Mass Municipal Lawyers Association, and also provided them with a list, which I think I had given the board at the last meeting, sort of a project I went through to see what the city had created for multifamily housing units in the last 10 years or so. It was an interesting discussion with the city council. I think I would summarize it by saying this. There was not a counselor at all who voiced any interest in trying to comply with the law by creating a 50-acre district that would allow multifamily by right at at least 15 units an acre within a half mile of Anderson-Wooburn Station. None whatsoever. In fact, they were disappointed, as the mayor was, and frankly, as I am, that at least as the legislation and the draft guidelines that accompany it as they're drafted at the moment, there's no recognition of communities like Wooburn who have done an incredible job, not only creating new housing units in the city of all kinds, but particularly of affordable housing, which ironically is not even mentioned. Affordable housing is not even a goal or mentioned anywhere as a requirement in the housing choice law, which seems a complete disconnect from the messages that we've heard, communities have heard from the state for the last several decades. So the city will be writing a letter of comment to the state. It will be saying that Wooburn does not intend to try to create a district, at least not as the guidelines are currently confining it. And I think it will also, the letter will suggest that communities like Wooburn that have either attained 10% of its housing stock as affordable, and by the way, we have attained that, we're 11.5% with the most recent units that we added. And I am confident that even when, with the new census numbers, when they recalculate them later this year, we will remain over that 10%. So it doesn't mean that we wouldn't see 40B projects, and when we do, we've approved several of them. But the, sort of the whole onus shifts on that from an understanding, if you have less than 10%, it's very, very likely that a denial by the local ZBA would be overturned by the Housing Appeals Court. But if you're over 10% and the Zoning Board of Appeals elects not to approve it, there's a very, very slim likelihood that the Housing Appeals Court would overturn that denial, because there will be a presumption that the city is doing its part to provide affordable housing because it's taken the 10%. So the comments are due by the end of the month. I had harbored a hope at one point I might have the letter written by now, but I don't. So I will share it with you, though, when I get it drafted.
All right. Thank you.
Dave had...
So, because when I was reading this, I, you know, this is a comment time for them. Is the city, what kind of language is the city looking at to make sure that they recognize that they're, not just us, but there are other communities who have done this, who have worked really hard? I mean, think of what we've done over the years on the planning board to help in the city council to get where we are. It was no easy task, and it's, they just, it doesn't matter. And I'm just curious, because it will, it'll all be in the language, and I'm sure our local elected officials will have the opinion of this community to think about when they're casting their final vote, and it is an election year.
Well, no, they actually, they've already voted on this. That's the issue. The housing choice...
Comment period mean?
Housing choice law has already been passed by the legislature in 2021. What we're dealing with now are the guidelines that'll be promulgated by the state agencies. The legislature deferred to the state agencies the task of creating the guidelines to actually implement the law.
Okay. Yeah, I've been at this long enough to know the law is three sentences and the guidelines are 55 pages.
That's kind of how it's shaped, and that three paragraphs versus 15 pages.
Yeah. So I mean, so that's where it becomes important that the city gets heard, the particular language of what it is we want them, you know, the exception is if you've done X, you don't have to do this, because it's just outrageous.
That's the intent.
Okay.
All right.
I'm good.
Is that, all right, anyone else on the housing choice law? No? All right. The next meeting, Tina?
Next meeting is going to be held on April 26th, 2022, starting at 7:00 PM, and presumption is it will be here in the chamber, which has been reserved for the meeting. The reason the presumption is in person, and I suppose we should talk to make sure that's still the case, but we will have a public hearing and a proposed zoning amendment that would allow off-site directional signage for the T-Bod district, and also clarify the permission to use solar voltaic systems in the T-Bod as well. We'll have the continued public hearing on Zero, New Boston Street, at least an informal discussion of proposed changes to the planning board's fees.
Zero Village Street, right?
I'm sorry. I meant to say Zero Village. The continued public hearing on Zero Village will be held. There will also be an informal discussion of potential changes to the board's fees. We'll have a discussion with Mr. Malonson relative to Robertson Way subdivision completion date, and a discussion of the expiration of completion date for the Carlson Way subdivision. That's also Mr. Malonson.
All right. And with respect to the Robertson Way, with respect to the vote we took tonight, that is a hearing on a potential revocation of the surety bond as well.
Yes, I'm sorry. Be clear.
All right. All right. Any questions for Tina on that? All right. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes from the March 8th, 2022 meeting. If everyone has taken a look at that, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the draft minutes from the March 8th, 2022 planning board meeting as a...
Motion by Bob. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mike. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, I would ask for a vote. All in favor, please raise your hand. That would be seven in favor and none opposed. Tina, is there other business matters that may legally come before the board not known at the time of posting?
There are none.
All right. With that, we have completed our business, and Bob?
To adjourn.
There is a motion by Dave to adjourn, second by Bob. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask for a vote. All in favor, please raise your hand.
What was the time?
Oh, that's funny.
That's funny. I have 7:43.
I do, too.
You good?
Well, they're getting longer.
All right. So all in favor, seven in favor, none opposed. The meeting stands adjourned at 7:43.